Please rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to today's edition of the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners Board meeting. And because I skipped ahead, I moved out of my thing. Okay, sorry about that. You're pulling up my agenda. I do want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting and we are being recorded both audio and video. And if you come to address the Board of Commissioners, please come to the podium and introduce yourself with your name and address for the record, please. This time, any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
I have none.
Same. Approval of previous minutes from July 28th and August 3rd and August 17th.
So move.
Second. Got a motion, second. I'll prepare to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any additions to the agenda?
No.
Thank you. Public input and recognitions of visitors. Richard Ork, did you want to?
If you want me to, I can definitely introduce one of our first presenters today. It's the Vail District Manager, Wayne Monger. He and I have been on the job about the same amount of time. We've enjoyed a lot of exchanges.
Right.
Most of them very, very positive.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to, before we get started, I do want to thank Wayne and his right left hand, Sandy. I do want to thank Wayne for really bringing out Stephanie Cox, their law enforcement person, who actually works a huge area between the Idaho, Washington, down to Nevada borders. But we had a situation outside of Hermiston at Sunshine and Joy Lane. And although it took a time, it was done very professionally. It was done successfully. And it is sustainable at this time. So I, for an introduction, I would like to say thank you more than anything.
Thank you. Right. Like you said, I'm Wayne Monger. I'm the district manager for the Vail BLM district, which covers 5.1 million surface acres across, you know, just into Washington, all the way down to Nevada, hugging the Idaho side. We cover about 7.3 million subsurface acres in our district. And as Commissioner Doran said, you know, we have one law enforcement officer. So we really appreciate your patience if you have any law enforcement issues. But mainly today, I wanted to come up and introduce myself and introduce Sandy Tennyson. She's the Assistant Field Manager out of the Baker Field Office. And just wanted to make sure you're getting our quarterly reports that we're sending. And I brought some extras. May I approach you?
Absolutely.
So here's, here's the last one. We're currently working on the last quarter, the fourth quarter. So this is the quarter that ended in July. And what we're hoping to do is get these out every quarter. And if you have any questions or anything, just please let us know. You know, I don't have any sacred cows. So if you have any question at all, please bring them up and we'll have honest and open conversations. And sometimes I might tell you, I absolutely don't know, but we'll try and find out from the staff. And I'm all about collaboration and working together. And you know, if we don't know a problem, we can't solve it together. So please just let us know anything you have. And Sandy, did you have anything you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, I can just, moving forward with the South Fork and the Walla Walla EA process. And in fact, just had a meeting last month here up in Pendleton at the Forest Service Office with our partnering agencies, Forest Service, NOAA, US Fish and Wildlife, ODF, and W was also part of the meeting, and the tribe. And together, we started the process of collaborating through the decision-making process of the, of what the next step, what we're going to do with the, what our ideas are for the South Fork and the Walla Walla.
Sandy, were any of the property owners at that meeting?
No, they were not. This was specifically just for our agencies, internal federal agencies.
But the tribes were there?
The tribe was there as well, yes.
But not the property owners?
Not the property owners. In this specific meeting. We have met with them separately. We have a facilitator that's working through some of those collaborative meetings.
We haven't, we haven't had a meeting in a long, long, long time.
With?
The facilitator.
With the facilitator? That was, when was that? That was back in?
That was over a year ago.
So let me look into that so that we can get you guys included in on where we are in the process and what we're?
I think it's more important that the landowners know.
Absolutely. And we've been keeping them in the loop with?
Yeah, I've been in contact with Larry quite a bit and he and I have been.
Yeah, he and I talk.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that Larry Winter?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There's still a void.
Yeah, absolutely. And this was pre-scoping. We wanted to, we wanted to, it was, it was purposeful that we had the.
I wasn't going to bring this up, but.
No, you're fine. You're fine. The agencies, because as you know, there was some conflict with the, after the flood. And we wanted to settle the dispute about the damage assessment that was done, the BLM did, and with law enforcement. And we wanted to talk with the regulatory agencies because they were on one side, the property owners are on another. So we wanted to keep it separate so it didn't have a conflicting meeting. And that's why we had it facilitated. So we, we addressed the damage assessment that we have already provided. And we wanted to alleviate some of those concerns and find a way to move forward through the NEPA process and looking at the full ACEC and not just the access issue. So that's, we wanted to get all of them on the same page before we started doing official scoping. Does that?
It is. And I think, to be clear, the landowners are definitely a major part of this.
Right, absolutely.
But we also have to realize that Harris Park is a gateway
Right.
to thousands of visitors to BLM and US Forest Service property, along with county park. And with that gate closed, we eliminate an extremely large amount of foot traffic into the foothills. But not only that, we eliminate coming back down from the other side.
Right.
So it's not just the thousands that jump off from the gateway from Harris Park. It's also the thousands that come back down from the other side. Again, I'm new to government. I have, I think I had this conversation with you. I have a hard time working at the speed of government. And this is something that we need to get solved sooner than.
We are planning pre-scoping meetings with public, open houses, this November. So we're just finalizing those details and locations. The plan is to have, our thought is to have at least one meeting in Melton Free Water and one in Walla Walla. So be looking for that information coming out soon. Just making those final details.
I really do appreciate you guys reaching the subject because it is critical to Umatilla County. It's a huge issue. It's one that's not going to go away by landowners, by the county, by BLM, by US Forest Service. It's just, it's a critical, very critical nexus for the whole county.
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, no sacred cows, so we can bring up any topic.
Yep. You know me.
Yeah, absolutely.
So anyway, I appreciate that. Can you give us a rundown on the, kind of a quick recap on where we are with fires in your district?
Yeah, fires. Luckily, we've, on the BLM side, we've been very fortunate. Most of our fires have been small, with the exception of the Willow Creek fire, which was right outside of Ontario. And so that started maybe May, June. And in one period, it went from initial start of 500 acres to 20,000 acres. And that was all within six hours. So we really thought we were going to have a horrible fire season. But again, luckily, we've had maybe 15, 20 throughout the summer. And most of those have been, I think the biggest, other than that Willow Creek, was 1,200 acres. And it's all been knocked out in initial attack. So we've had no teams assigned or anything. So I know the Forest Service has been a little less fortunate, but not the big blowups that we've seen historically, so.
Well, I appreciate you knocking on the wood there.
Right, absolutely. Looking at, looking at the temps, I'm hoping next week might, might be the start of fall, right?
One other question, Wayne, and another one that we've had a lot of discussions on. And I read the minutes from the Walla County Commissioners Meeting where you guys had a great conversation. And I thought that it was very eye-opening. But the land transfer issues are, they've always simmered there as far back as I can remember, even non-government is. But they seem to be elevating themselves to a higher level of scrutiny. And I think time, obviously, the speed of government shouldn't be zero. It should have some movement. And some of these land transfers, whether it's through the recreation program, whether through its quick deeds, whether it's through a transfer or even a development, there seems to be just a, just a huge roadblock to get past that. I know that there is some new people in the solicitors office and those type of things. But do you see that getting more expeditious? And it wouldn't take a lot, but I mean, what's your view on that? And how do, how do you, would you suggest counties to move forward?
Right. Is this a career-ending event, right? So to be honest with you, I don't see it getting faster. You know, the first step is to identify those in our resource management plans. And those have a shelf life of, you know, 20 years. So there are ways that we can amend that, which is a NEPA process, right? But the first step is to identify those parcels. And that's what I tried to convey more eloquently at the last meeting up there. And I think a member of the press kind of took a little spin to it. But that, that is the first step, is to identify it in the resource management plan. And then kind of move it forward. If someone's interested, then we can go through the lands and realty actions. And I think you're starting to become familiar with that.
More and more. Where Doug is.
Right? And there are, you know, there are other avenues, like the RMPP process, Recreation Public Purposes, where we can, if it's identified that we want to dispose of it some way, then we can look at those avenues. But the foundational start is that resource management plan. And whether that's through an amendment or through a true, full, new evaluation.
Off the top of your head, do you know when the current one expires?
They don't really expire. They just get old and get stale. So I think Sandy just went through the process on the Baker Field Office of an evaluation. So that's, you know, every 10 years, we go through an evaluation and see if it's still pertinent, see if it needs to be updating. And they just went through that. And what was the, that one was from?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Yes.
So Sandy, do you reach out to the counties and the planning departments? And do you reach out to public notice? Or how do, how do you review that?
For when, for this exercise, it was an internal evaluation of us just as specialists, looking at the documents that we have and saying, what do we, what needs to be updated? What is still current? What, what things have changed? What laws have changed since the original document? Just kind of start getting the process started on what we need to address moving forward. And then it goes to the state office to decide, make that decision. Okay, yes, we recommend that it's time to update this document. And, and then we'll try to, you know, work through the process of getting it scheduled and funding and all that to make it happen.
And then once, once it goes up to the state director, then it gets published, the findings on e-planning for all the public to see.
Do you take public input at that point?
Not at that point, no.
Before we let you leave, I want to make sure, Commissioner Murdo, I got a chance to ask you a question or two, if you wanted to.
My interest was that, interesting in your background, since you are both new to the area.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you want to go first?
Yeah, so I've, I've been here in Baker, well, here in eastern Oregon for, it was three years in August. And I'm originally from Virginia. So I'm from the east coast. Don't hold that against me or anything. But I've spent most of my career with the National Park Service before coming here to Oregon with the Bureau of Land Management. And have been in this role for almost a year now. So is the AFM. So really excited to be part of the team here in the Baker Field Office and working with you all on lots of different projects, including, you know, step right into South Fork Walla Walla as soon as it's daylight, so.
I admittedly was up there a couple of weeks ago.
Uh huh, yeah.
Saw that area. I understood it went miles into the wilderness. I got about 100 feet. I was told it went farther.
Yeah, no, no, we're just kind of like this, I think we've described it as the tree trunk. It's a three-mile section, a tree trunk, that then goes into all the branches of the Forest Service trails. It just goes on and on forever. So it's very, that, that section is so important for recreation in this area and natural resources. So we're, we're working through the system as quickly as we can to get those alternatives together and get public input so that we can move forward and see where we were going to go.
Well, I witnessed a lot of hikers.
Yes.
Not to be mistaken, enjoying them, but I.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. It's a gem. It's a nice little quiet place. I would have thought it was back there. So that's, that's beautiful.
And mine's probably a little longer, but probably not as exciting. So I, I got out of the Navy and I started with the Forest Service in 94 in Escalante, Utah. And working on a timber marking crew, running two crews. And after about four years of that, the mills started shutting down. So I went back into the military, into the Coast Guard. And did that for another four-year block and got out and got a job there in St. George, Utah, on the fire crew. And from there, I went fire crew, fire prevention, fuels, law enforcement, and recreation. And then I got a taste of some planning and decided the grass looked a little greener on the contracting side. And left the government and found out if the grass is greener, there's usually a little more manure spread on it. So I decided to come back into the government and went, joined the BLM and started in recreation and became the rec planner for the Vermillion Cliffs National Monument. And then jumped over to the Parachute National Monument. And then went down to Phoenix, Arizona, as the monument manager and assistant field manager. And then from there, I came up to Roseburg, Oregon, as the deputy district manager. And then finally, here in Vail, as the district manager. So I've tried a little bit of it all. I don't know if I have depth of anything, but that's mine in kind of a bubble there.
Well, you travel, both travel long ways to, to present today. I'm actually was born in Rhode Island, so I know. But you went out of your way to come up today and make a presentation, which I don't really believe I've ever been accustomed to in 10 years as a commissioner, right? So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, if you have anything you want to discuss that's not a matter on the agenda, now would be your time to do so. Here you're seeing that. We'll jump right into our, our business agenda. And number one is the tourism grant.
Kerry's on the board.
Oh, yes, I've got that. This is, I believe, this is the disability grant that we discussed previously, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if you recall, back in June, the board approved setting aside funding to support tourism programs in Umatilla County for people with disabilities. An application for a grant for the funding has been received by the county. The grant will be utilized to create videos of local establishments showing the accessibility that will be available on Chambers' website and Travel Oregon. So the request action today is approve the grant and authorize payment in the amount of $25,000 to Mobility Matters. And as Dan mentioned, Kerry Wallstreet is on the phone with tourism. I didn't know if Kerry wanted to say a few words or not. Yeah, maybe not. Okay, so the requested action again is to approve grant, the grant and authorize payment of $25,000.
Second?
Got a motion, second. You have a discussion. I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number two is the Pendleton Pilot Rock Enterprise Zone expansion.
I guess I can. What's before the board is a request to expand the Pendleton Pilot Rock Enterprise Zone. There are three parcels near the Pendleton Airport that are being requested to be added to the enterprise zone. One, two are fairly, fairly small parcels to match the boundaries of the city, as well as include the one that was just added to the urban growth boundary. And then also, primarily, this one is to expand it to the west and include part of the reserve industrial zone. So what's before the board is to approve the expansion to include these parcels. The city of Pilot Rock and the city of Pendleton will also need to approve the expansion and then I believe also get the consent from the board. And then it goes to the state for final approval.
Any questions?
Okay. Move for approval?
Second? Got a motion, second. You have a discussion. I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
What was it?
It's a board order.
Item number three is Southwest Hermiston Urban Renewal Presentation.
Morning Commissioners. Actually, if we pull up the Sure Draft Plan PowerPoint presentation. So as you're all familiar, I'm Mark Morgan. I'm the Assistant City Manager with the City of Hermiston. Also with me today is Clint Spencer, our city planner, and Elaine Howard, who is our consultant, helping us form the urban renewal area plan. Far left. Yeah, there you go. There you go.
Okay, and then I think you can click it.
Perfect. All right.
So we give them control.
Yeah, so be ready for long, how long you guys got? Anyway, so we'll kind of go through this quickly. I know it's kind of a lot of information, but I want to make sure that you all understand, you know, what we're talking about, what the background is on this project and how it impacts all of the underlying taxing jurisdictions, which, one of which is the Umatilla County as well.
Well, it wasn't working.
Wait a second. You're moving my stuff. I'll hold it.
Let's see. So what's being asked is, city staff was directed by the city council to develop an urban renewal plan back in March of 2022. And then you'll be asked to receive this plan and ultimately approve and ask that this plan be forwarded on for ultimate adoption by the city. So why are we doing this South Hermiston Urban Renewal Area project? By far and away, the biggest purpose is to extend utilities, really to the largest remaining residential tract in the city, largest remaining single owner tract within the city. Since 2017, within the city, we've had about 600 housing units built. And year-to-date, this was actually through the end of July, we've built 142 housing units within the city. And so it's becoming very evident over the past decade or so that, you know, the biggest request that developers have of the city as far as developing additional land is simply supplying additional land that is relatively easy to develop, mainly due to its proximity to utilities. So what the project that we're actually looking at here, and the reason why urban renewal is a potential financing option here, is that because state law identifies blight is required in order to form an urban renewal area, and lack of utilities is a form of blight. So I think a lot of folks think of urban renewal as being something where you're renewing an existing downtown core, those types of things. But it can also be utilized for, really, this is a greenfield site. So this is outlined in red there. That's 353 acres in the southwestern quadrant of the city. And it's a long ways from any city utilities. For anybody who may remember, have a long memory, this was a former C and B livestock area. Also, at one point, was planned to become a residential golf course development. That ultimately fell through once Tiger Woods stopped winning championships. And so we've been working with the, the property owners for a long time here to get that area developed. But the, the problem was always, how do we get utilities out there? It was just always a challenge. And so we've been working with them for quite a long time. And ultimately, what we'll be looking at in the urban renewal district is upgrading the City of Hermiston's Joseph Booster Pump Station to boost water down to the area, extending about one mile of city sewer main in Highway 207 to reach that area. And then constructing approximately one mile of water main to connect into where the water has been boosted through a City of Hermiston-owned water main that currently brings regional water system back into the city. So that will go through the site. And then ultimately, also adding a 2 million gallon storage reservoir on the site so that we can guarantee stored water capacity for all of the housing development down there. So all of the water improvement components currently estimated and inflated for construction anticipated in calendar year 2024. The water side of things is about $6.2 million. The sewer side of things is about $2.8 million. And then the final component of the urban renewal area is development of some park amenities. So development of a large-scale regional park that will benefit not just residents of the area within that development, but also the broader community. Now, one of the reasons why that area was selected specifically is that's an elevated area that's actually higher than the Hermiston Butte. We've taken a number of trips out there, hiked up to the top. And you can get some excellent views of, of the region. You can see the Umatilla Army Depot igloos from there. You can see all the way across to Washington. So there's some real opportunity for developing some real regional-level attractive hiking trails, those types of things. And so the park component is, is included in there as well. So how does it work? Number one, I'm not an urban renewal expert. That's why we bring on Elaine Howard Consulting. And she'll walk through a lot of the nitty-gritty on it. But ultimately, an urban renewal area diverts new property tax revenues to pay for improvements. So the impact to existing services, if we're diverting new property tax revenues away from, you know, Umatilla County, Umatilla County Fire District Number One, you know, those types of entities, you know, that can have an impact on, you know, those taxing entities' ability to provide service. A really good change, in my opinion, that occurred to state law a number of years ago, since when the City of Hermiston adopted our downtown urban renewal area, is this concept of revenue sharing and requiring revenue sharing after we reach a certain level of property tax generation going into the urban renewal area. And so what that does is, after that urban renewal area starts generating a certain amount of revenue every single year, then we basically get capped on how much is coming in every year at that amount. And then every additional dollar of property tax revenue that comes in after that now flows to all of the existing underlying jurisdictions, the fire district, the county, the ESD, those types of entities. And so the way that the numbers roughly work out, the total development is looking at around 1,300 housing units. And so with that revenue sharing piece, it's not as though we're asking the taxing jurisdictions to provide service to 1,300 homes with no, you know, tax revenue to support that. Ultimately, it works out to we hit that cap after about 280, 300 homes. So then the remaining about 1,000 homes after that, all of that would go to the underlying jurisdictions as normal. Also, very important to keep in mind, bonds are not impacted through urban renewal. So things like the school district bond, obviously, they just completed to really excellent elementary schools, expanding the high school, that type of thing. So it's not something where we're adding a bunch of houses, adding a bunch of students, and they're not paying into, you know, expanding the schools like they should. So every additional home that gets built out there will help the Hermiston School District pay off those bonds. Same thing with the fire district bond. So it only goes toward those permanent operating levies and not bonds. So this is an excellent graphic, if you can kind of follow, you know, where we're, what we're showing here. Along the bottom, you can see is the timeline. Along the left-hand side is the, the amount of tax increment revenue. And so when we form this, this urban renewal area, the existing taxing revenue that is currently going to the taxing jurisdictions is very, very minimal because there's no developments on it. It's essentially a greenfield site. And so as we start building homes out there, that's when that gray area starts to divert into every dollar the home is built out there that goes in the form of property taxes. That gets diverted into the urban renewal district to pay for these improvements. And then once we hit that, you know, 10% of indebtedness, that's where that green area starts to come into play. And that's where you see the revenue to the urban renewal area is capped to be able to pay off, you know, existing. pay off, you know, existing debt in the urban renewal area. And so all of that additional revenue goes to the underlying jurisdictions. And then by the time the urban renewal area expires, now all of that additional taxable value goes to the underlying jurisdictions. Let's see, other impacts. So important to keep in mind, there's kind of two components here. We're going to have to go out and borrow funds to construct those utility improvements upfront. And so there's the urban renewal agency or urban renewal area, which will ultimately be being used to pay off that debt. But in order to guarantee those loans, the city and the developer are going to have to cover that debt in the early years because the urban renewal area, you know, it's going to incur the debt, it's going to take several years to build the infrastructure, those types of things. You're not going to get a home constructed, you know, for two or three years after we begin going. And so the city and the developer will have a development agreement where we guarantee that we will share that debt service obligation in the early years. And then as revenue from the urban renewal area begins to accrue, that will start to pay off that debt. Also, the developer has agreed to donate about an acre and a half of property to the fire district for their use as either a potential future fire station, or they could just simply treat it as an asset if they feel like they don't, you know, want a fire station down there, down the road, you know, they could turn around and sell that property. But so they've guaranteed that they'll donate an acre and a half of property to the fire district. And then also, we're working toward implementing an impact fee, similar to something like a system development charge where it's every home that gets built in that area, and this would be included in the development agreement, every home that gets built in that area will pay an impact fee to the fire district for their presence in that area. And then finally, obviously, the utilities is one aspect of it, but obviously, the traffic generation is going to be a significant component of this. The developer is still finishing up their traffic impact analysis. And the traffic component is one that is really better served by something like an ongoing fee rather than having to upfront finance something like, say, a traffic signal at Feadville and 207 or something like that. Because, you know, traffic is one of those things that builds over time. You're not going to need a traffic signal at Feadville and 207 when there's five houses out there, but you might by the time there's 700 homes out there. So the concept there being that the developer would pay a fee, beginning with the first house, those revenues will accrue. And then by the time we hit that need for installing those improvements, that's when we would install those improvements. Which again, is different than with utilities, whether there's one home or 1,000 homes, they've got to be able to flush the toilets and turn on, you know, the water. So the risk to the city is there's a shared debt obligation, like I mentioned, with the developer. The maximum obligation where we've been invited to apply to business organs, Infrastructure Finance Authority for their Special Public Works Fund for the water side of things. We're also invited to apply with DEQ on the sewer side of things. So currently, it's looking as the maximum debt obligation, assuming, for both the city and the city, the city and the developer, is about $500,000 a year. And currently, there is capacity within the city's utility fund to cover that in its entirety and then some. So we're really, the city council feels very good about the ability that if, you know, everything imploded tomorrow and the developer, you know, runs off to Morocco, you know, we have the ability to cover that debt obligation no matter what. And it's also important to keep in mind that the water improvements specifically are called out in our Water System Master Plan that we updated in 2019 that calls for a future water storage reservoir in that area because it's the highest area in the city. And so any water that's stored in that area could ultimately serve all of the customers within the city and other potential future development. So there is, you know, a good justification for having the utility fund ultimately backstop that debt. So let's see, worst case scenario, we assumed borrowing, you know, $12 million incurred day one. We assumed the absorption rate of homes at only 30 homes per year, and we assumed that the first occupancy doesn't occur until 2027. So, and then also, I mentioned, we assume that the debt term is only 20 years versus 30 years, but the IFA loan is anticipated to be offered at 30 years, which would bring down significantly that annual debt service obligation. So that gives you a bunch of the background on, you know, what the project is. And now if we switch over to the other presentation, I can have Elaine come up and give you the background on how the mechanics actually work of the urban renewal area.
Did you tour this?
Yeah, we did on the East Melbourne Women's Coalition Housing Tour. That's the site that we toured off of.
Quick question, Mark.
I thought I'd been out there with you.
Now it's the...
Mark, which one of you supported this?
That one.
Mark, on the water storage, is that?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Is the water storage an open, water storage or is it a tank?
It'd be a tank, yeah.
I just saw it in the middle of the park.
Yeah.
Since you're still standing up there, I'm assuming you're, I'm hearing a lot of tax rates type of stuff. Are you in contact with Rachel from Assessment?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, I've been letting her know about this for, since January because I realize it's a, it's just one more thing for them to keep track of.
Yeah, it's a lot of pieces for Assessment. So I want to make sure our assessor was in the loop.
Yeah, I would say compared to your previous assessor, she was like, that's fine, we handle it. Which is nice.
Don't give her a big head.
All right, I'll turn it over to Elaine.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Elaine Howard. I'm a consultant who works on urban renewal tax increment financing across the state of Oregon and have done so for the past 18 years. So I've worked with about 85% of the different taxing, tax increment areas in the state, so know it well. I've worked with the city of Pendleton's area and been out here a number of times, so know your area and love it. I work with Tiberia Solutions, who does all of the financial data in the report. Some of this will be repetitive to Mark's presentation, so I'll just go through those parts quickly so you don't have to hear everything twice. So the things that we will cover is the role of the county, plan overview and what the process of adopting an urban renewal plan is. So the role of a county when a city adopts an urban renewal plan that's within their own city limits is just that we are required to brief the county on the urban renewal plan, including the maximum indebtedness of the plan. And so that will be one of the slides that will be coming. And then to also review with you the taxing district's consult and confer letter from the Hermiston City Council. So that letter was a letter sent to you that detailed the forgone revenue as a result of implementing urban renewal area within their city. A plan is adopted through public input. It's sent to an urban renewal agency for their review, and that has already happened. The urban renewal agency reviewed the plan last month. There's a presentation to the county. The planning commission must review the plan for conformance to the city's comprehensive plan. There is a city council hearing and vote by the city council. That meaning has to be noticed to all citizens in Hermiston, either through utility bills, and I think that's how you're doing it, right? So through their utility bills. This is the proposed boundary of the area. It is in southwest Hermiston. It is a vacant property that is not producing, it is producing very little property taxes to all the different taxing jurisdictions. Yet, as Mark said, is lacking the infrastructure to allow it to develop on its own. So if urban renewal is not used as a tool, that property will probably sit vacant again for a number of years until at some point it becomes economically feasible to develop. There are statutory limitations on the amount of urban renewal that any city may use. They may have up to 25% of their total assessed value in urban renewal and up to 25% of their acreage. If this plan is adopted, Hermiston would have 9.6% of its acreage in urban renewal and only 3.94% of its assessed value. So much lower than those 25% caps. Again, the projects Mark outlined are infrastructure upgrades, parks and pathways, developer incentives that would be tied to some kind of workforce housing and administration of the urban renewal area. For the projects, those would be the water transmission line, the Joseph Booster Pump Station upgrades, the sewer main line and the 2 million gallon reservoir. And the parks, projects are to develop parks within the area, including the large 38-acre community park and several smaller neighborhood parks and trails throughout the area. Again, developer incentives would be a system development charge reimbursement for the development of workforce housing, so housing that has a lower price point. And then the administration of the area. There are required annual reporting, financial statements, and just the general administration of the plan. These are the estimated costs of the projects in both constant 2023 dollars and year of expenditure dollars in the future. So the costs are in today's dollars about $15,304 and then year of expenditure cost $18 million. Those are really close because this area is planning to do those projects quickly. A lot of times when I work on urban renewal plans, the costs vary greatly because those projects can't get done until much later in the plan. This is only a 19-year plan. Most urban renewal plans are from 25 to 30 years or sometimes longer. So the goal of this plan is to get in, do that infrastructure, get the costs repaid, and then to return all that property to the property tax rolls. The proposed maximum indebtedness of this area is $18,100,000. Maximum indebtedness is the total amount of money that the Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency may spend on projects, programs, and administration for the area. The top row says total net TIF or total net tax increment finance proceeds. That's a little bit higher because that includes the interest paid on any debt proceeds. And interest as defined in the statute that covers urban renewal is not included in that maximum indebtedness number. So the impacts to the taxing districts would be a little over $20 million over that 19-year timeframe. That makes the capacity in today's dollars a little over $15 million. And then, as Mark said, they are working to do upfront loans through the State Infrastructure That would make it so that the capacity in the early years, years one through five, would be much higher than in most urban renewal areas because usually that capacity depends on that growth happening. But when you're developing a greenfield, it's always the chicken and egg. How do you get the infrastructure in to allow that growth to happen? Fortunately, we have funding sources like the State Infrastructure Fund that will supply that financing to allow these kinds of projects to move forward. Mark showed this chart that shows the time period, about 2035, when some of that revenue would start being shared with overlapping taxing districts. And you can see that that revenue, that very last time period goes down, and that is because that's the last year of the urban renewal area and not as much money is forecasted to be needed in fiscal year 2042. So more would be released to the taxing jurisdictions. This just shows how that revenue sharing works. So when you look at the column next to the end, it shows increment shared. So that increment is the actual assessed value, so the amount shared is the tax rate times that increment shared. So it is projected, if the development occurs on the timeframe, that in fiscal year in 2036, the actual total revenue shared with all of the taxing districts would be $416,000 and then that goes up each year until the area ends. In terms of looking at that as your share of the county, whatever percentage you are of this total tax rate, that amount would come to the county. This is, as Mark said, a relatively new feature of urban renewal within the statute and a very important one, especially in this kind of an area where you're producing new homes that are going to be requiring services in the future. The impacts through fiscal year end 2042, so these are 19-year impacts, are shown here. So the county, this is just the general government category, the county would be about $3.2 million. Again, that impact is of future tax revenues. And if this area doesn't develop, you wouldn't be getting those tax increment revenues anyway if that area just continues to be a vacant greenfield. So the city is a little under $7 million, the fire district is about $2 million, and then the other districts are much lower in terms of the overall impact over the 19 years. This just shows those impacts on an annual basis. And you can see that the impacts don't really start until fiscal year in 2029, and that is when those first houses are projected to go on the tax rolls. So those amounts that you are impacted in between them is just the amount of that growth of 3% based on the existing value of the properties. Education is a little different because the education service district and the school district are funded through the state school fund on a per people basis, so they are not directly impacted by urban renewal. And in fact, as Mark said, their bond will receive significant additional revenues to be able to help pay that off earlier. Community colleges have a similar kind of funding ratio based on the amount of classes that students take, so they also get reimbursed on the state level. So this shows an impact to the schools of $20 million, $7 million total overall impacts for the area of $20 million. But again, that impact to the schools is not an impact directly to the schools, it's an impact to the state school fund, which is reimbursed through other sources. These show the education totals and then the total of education and general government. And we can come back to any of these if you decide you want to. The next steps and schedule for this are next Wednesday is a planning commission meeting and an open house in Hermiston. The city council hearing is scheduled for October 10th, and the city council vote is scheduled for October 24th. It's a non-emergency ordinance, so it doesn't go into effect for 30 days after adoption if it's adopted. That is my presentation. I'd be happy to answer, it's very technical, but I'd be happy to answer any questions and I know Mark would also.
Any questions?
Richard, what? Pretty impressive.
One question. All of that money is a push for the schools. Is that correct? All $20 million?
The $20 million is a total, the schools was about $7 million, and that $7 million, I can't say it's a direct push, but I can tell you that historically, because the legislature determines the per pupil ratio every time they meet. Traditionally, that per pupil ratio has always been, has always included a backfill of those urban renewal funds. And if they continue doing the way they've done, and I've never seen the legislature come in and decide to reduce funding to schools. So it would be anticipated that that would continue.
You mean a special pressure on?
No, it is impressive when you go through the whole presentation on the different amenities that are in there between the two parts, the food court pod, just the vision of it's a whole lot different than what we're used to in Umatilla County. It's an impressive layout. But it's an impressive piece of property.
It is, and it's really exciting that they've included some of the commercial too, so that people can have some of the services right there, the little food court pod and all of the recreation. So it provides a very livable community. So yeah, it is exciting.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
And Umatilla River Bridge, MOU.
I'll steer if you want to. You're saying, no, no. No, not you, I'm sorry. But Mark's here.
Yeah, so again, Mark Morgan, Assistant City Manager with the City of Hermiston. The City of Hermiston's transportation system plan has for 20-plus years included a provision for two potential crossings of the Umatilla River in Hermiston, potential future crossings. Near as I can tell, it was kick the can down the road because they couldn't figure out at the time which one would make the most sense. I don't think anybody ever envisioned actually constructing two expensive bridges within that close of proximity to each other. But the question is, do you build a bridge across the Umatilla River by extending Highway 207 or Elm Avenue, basically there by the hospital? Do you extend that across to connect up to Powerline Road? Or do you extend? Or do you extend Pumpkin Center Road further off to the north and tie it in directly more to the interchange there by Powerline Road? Now, when you really get down into the nuts and bolts of it, there's trade-offs everywhere, and I think everybody has an opinion on really which one, you know, makes more sense or not, you know, until you really start getting into a full engineered analysis of it. And so that's where, you know, we decided that, you know, this is really something that I think if we're looking really long range, you know, really into the future, tying together the City of Hermiston, the City of Yumitilla, we know they have a lot of housing development going on in the south, you know, south hill area, but all of the commercial services, those types of things are still really largely going to remain within Hermiston. You know, what do we look at for providing that future connection to ensure that we can, you know, grow together? And so we also recognize that, you know, building a bridge is extremely expensive and isn't going to occur, you know, overnight. And when we go to ask for funds, we can't just go with something drawn on the napkin and say, yeah, we think this is, you know, the best place that it should go. So we reached out to the City of Yumitilla and Yumitilla County about a year ago or so about, hey, you do want to partner on doing a preliminary analysis at least to the level of which one of these do we pick? You know, if we're going to be going out and really start beating the drum to ask for funding from state and federal agencies, we can't say, well, yeah, we haven't even decided which one we want to go with first. So that's where the City of Yumitilla and Yumitilla County agreed to partner with the city on funding a study by Anderson Perry to really look at basically, you know, trade-off analysis of which one really is the best. And ultimately, the results came back as, you know, it still can go either way, there's benefits and drawbacks of either one of them, but I think the Pumpkin Center Road extension one just simply has fewer potential unknowns that could drive up the cost. And mainly, that comes in the form of shoving that much more traffic down Elm puts, you know, traffic right into that Elm and 395 intersection there by McDonald's and Starbucks, which is already the highest, you know, vehicle trip count intersection in ODOT Region 5. So if we shove that much more traffic down there, this analysis takes into account, you know, what's the additional cost of upgrading that intersection, also upgrading the intersection of Elm and North First Place, which is right there by the railroad tracks, by Yumitilla Electric Co-op, again, very expensive. And then also just the length of the bridge itself is shorter and more defined at the Pumpkin Center option, as well as that option gives us the ability to connect in to River Road, the Pumpkin Center option gives us the option to connect in just to Pumpkin Center without going up the hill and tying into Pumpkin Center and kind of phasing it out into the future. So the Pumpkin Center Road option just simply seems the most feasible, the least number of questions, and also I think in my mind has always been my preferred option anyway because it is a much more direct tie-in directly to that Powerline Road and I-82 interchange and just, I think, provides a lot better connectivity to the city and west end of Yumitilla County. So what's before you this afternoon is really a relatively non-committal memorandum of understanding between Yumitilla County, the City of Hermiston, and the City of Yumitilla, mainly just picking the pony that we're going to start, you know, pushing is the bridge that we want to go forward as that Pumpkin Center Road option, so that now we can really start to move forward and start asking for those funds. So it just simply asks the county to agree that that's the option that they would prefer so that we can start going out and asking for commitments from state and federal funding agencies.
It was a thorough discussion too by all the partners, and I, the part that Mark did, we got is we had a lengthy discussion of by the time this bridge gets built, where is that development going to be? It's not going to be on Elm, but by that time, it's going to be out on Pumpkin Center, and that's the direction that that's going. I thought it was a great exercise, the information. The funding obviously, or the costs are done in 2022 dollars, so they're probably not extremely relevant to what we'll, where we'll end up, but it's still an expensive adventure. But it's nice to get this first step taken care of for sure. And with that said, if there's, I would move to endorse the MOU.
I'll second that a question. How far is it from Pumpkin Center to Elm?
It's probably about a mile.
It's well.
Yeah, so, and that's again, one of the other reasons in my mind of why the Pumpkin Center option is my, one of the preferred options, aside from just the cost aspects is putting a bridge there at Elm, there's already an existing bridge at Highland Extension, and so that's only about a mile from Elm to Highland. And so if we're really talking about getting that traffic flow between Hermiston and Yumitilla in that area, you know, you're really not solving all that much of an issue by just building another bridge just one mile north. So building it all the way up to Pumpkin Center really adds an entirely new node into the city from that northeast or northwest quadrant.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's Mark. Got a motion, a second, a full discussion. I'll pray the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I assume that supports our water tower project too.
I would hope so.
Okay. Let's go to the City of Yumitilla annexation.
The board is requested to consent to allow the City of Yumitilla to annex property owned by the county along with the county road into the city limits. The property is 18-acre parcel that is currently used for aggregate stockpiling, and the planned use on the north two acres is going to be for the PATH project. And so what's before the board is to consent to the annexation of the road and the tax lot owned by the county.
I would move for approval after sitting through the planning commission meeting in Yumitilla, which was extremely exciting and definitely an exercise in civic participation. I definitely would endorse this project.
Got a motion, a second, I'll pray the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Solid Waste Rate Increase Agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Walder, Planning Director. As you know, our department serves as liaison to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and we've, the committee has approved a couple different rate increases, proposed rate increases. So the first one is for sanitary disposal, and a couple representatives from sanitary disposal are here today, Kevin Miracle and Brandon Dahl, they can answer any questions that you might have. But that's the first one before you is for sanitary disposal.
I do have a couple of questions for Kevin.
I don't have a full presentation.
No, that's okay. I tried to reach out to you. I just want to set the expectation. You got to give your name.
Kevin Miracle, the District Manager for Sanitary Disposal.
A couple things, Kevin, and I did try to reach out to you, and didn't get a call back, but which leads to a couple concerns. I know you guys are a new company, we've sat down, had discussions, and there's a lot of changes that are going on, a lot of things that need to be kind of molded in. But all of a sudden, the last four to six weeks, I started getting phone calls, missed routes, some storage and stockpile at the tenant, at the transfer stations and those type of things. Is that just kind of a growing pains or?
So the, can you kind of expand on the storage and?
Yeah, at the transfer station, first of all, I got a call from Boardman last weekend or two weekends ago that the transfer station was full and there was no place to put anything. And then I referred him to your phone number. As a frequent user at Hermiston, I think that's why people call me is on the weekends, there's nothing getting hauled off, it gets up to the top of the transfer station.
Right.
And huge concern to a lot of folks, stuff not getting recycled, just pushed into the trucks and those type of things. And I, again, I understand it's a change of ownership and those type of things, but a rate increase, is that going to solve all of this?
No, that, the rate increase will help with, you know, our employees, trying to get them up to, you know, a market, a fair market wage is what we're doing there. With the transfer station, you know, like, if you, if you go there now and you look where the baler is for the cardboard, our baler's been down for a month. It's a 1991 baler. We've, you know, we've spent, I think, a little over, what, maybe about 30,000 on, you know, getting that thing up to date. Now we're pushing bales out again, starting yesterday, so that'll calm down. We've had some issues with supply chain, so even getting some of our transfer trucks worked on, so they're DOT approved, even being on the road, has been a pretty big challenge for us. We've had to actually tow trucks down in here into Pendleton to get worked on. We also use BDI, which is based in disposal in the Tri-Cities area. We've actually had, we contract them out or broker them out, and so they're actually hauling hauls for us when we're low on, when we're low on trucks or we have trucks that broke down. So we're making, you know, we're making, we're making adjustments. We do have peaks and valleys when it comes to the amount of volume, and yeah, on the weekend, Family Butte's not open, we have 12 trailers. You know, we get, we get to the point where we try to, you know, have all those trailers emptied. You know, we have equipment that breaks down and causes some of that. You know, we've, we've got a lot better. The facility itself was, was pretty dirty when we got there. We've made a lot of changes to the facility. I get anxiety when it's that messy, so just, just know that, you know, my narrative to the team is to make sure that we're able to push, you know, trash into the trailers and get stuff out. We're also looking at expanding part of the tip floor also, so we can have another bay in there. Yeah, so.
Just, I mean, I think you probably realize, man, a small community, people call the people they know.
Yeah.
And so my phone does ring.
Yeah.
So this, this price increase is going to employees, it's not going to operations?
It's, it's a little bit of both, so we did, so for like the drivers, we did a 7.3 increase.
Okay.
Our customer service staff, they were really on the lower end of, and so some of them are around 11 to 15, depending. And it's just kind of, and it's not like, hey, you guys have been doing a great job, it's just getting everybody up to a livable scale because everything is so expensive, so.
No, I get that.
And, you know, we've, you know, just since I've been here, I think we're a little over 750,000 dollars worth of containers, carts, roll-off boxes. We've purchased a total of 48, 48 roll-off boxes, all different sizes, a total of 38 two-yard to one and a half yard containers for our commercial business, and then we've also purchased two big loads, 35-gallon carts and 96-gallon carts for the residential piece.
And I appreciate that, and actually, all you guys do for the community. One other thing though is people do, when they don't get an answer on the phone, they get frustrated.
Yeah, and I, and so we've, so we've had a lot of big changes. So when we first came in, a lot of stuff was, you know, the route books were on three-by-five note cards, which I remember that from the early 90s when I was hauling trash. So getting the drivers switched over on that, and we tried to stop some of the hemorrhaging when it came to the amount of how many times we touched like a roll-off bill, because I think it went through seven or eight people before it actually got billed. So we were trying to stop the hemorrhaging there by kind of ramping up the system that the GOTS had in place. Well, once we did that, then we were able to put in Waste Connections Route Manager online, so we trained customer service staff, then we yanked the carpet out from underneath them again, and we trained them on our system, which is more automated. So it's been challenging. We've had, some of our, our billings to the city and the counties have been challenging because of the reports didn't marry over correctly, which we're working through that. I think we're on our second, second month of billing on our new system, so we're starting to see a lot of things kind of shake out and more about, yeah. But I do want the facility clean, trust me, and I, a clean tip floor makes me happy.
I appreciate the answers. The answer in the phone is probably the one that kind of probably frustrates most.
And we're, and we're working on that too.
Yeah, I get it.
We've hired, we've hired two more customer service staff to kind of help ease some of that too, so.
There's nothing madder than a mad farmer.
No, no, I get it.
By the time they get to you, they're probably really frustrated, so.
Yeah, no, I totally get it. And, and you know, if, if you guys are hearing that, you know, if you continue to hear that, just let me know, and then we can address it kind of, you know, on our end to make sure that we're firing on all cylinders, so.
Nope, nope. Thanks, Kevin, thanks for coming up. I move for approval.
Got a motion, a second, a full discussion. I'll pray the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Same thing, Pi La Rock.
All right, so the next one, again, Bob Walder, Planning Director. The next one is for Eastern Oregon Waste Management, and I believe Jimmy Doherty is here.
Gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning.
Any questions for me?
You got to do the name thing.
My name's Jimmy Doherty, I live in Pendleton, operate out of Pi La Rock.
No questions to you?
Okay, at this time, I entertain the motion. Second. Motion, a second, a full discussion. I'll pray the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Well, that was easy.
Gentlemen, I think Kevin's going, what about me?
You're welcome, Jim.
Solid Waste Franchise.
Yeah, so this next one is for a disposal site franchise renewal for quality compost. I don't believe Travis is here, but this one is for a renewal. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee did approve it at their, recommend approval at their July 12th meeting.
Any questions? Okay, now, entertain the motion.
So moved.
Got a motion, a second, I'll pray the motion, say aye.
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 Are you opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to skip ahead just a minute because I want to get the Sheriff's Office guys out of here, and then I'm going to call up Tom Fellows, so.
They might be liking it here.
So I'm going to skip ahead to item number 15, which is the rescue litter purchase.
I'm as an assistant now.
Morning, Dwight Johnson, Yumitilla County Sheriff's Office. So we are continuing our process of upgrading our search and rescue capabilities, and one of those things that we've identified is increasing our ability to get into more remote areas, and we've already upgraded our rope systems, and our second goal is to update our litter system, is the litters are what we use to move victims out of remote areas. We've identified a litter in conjunction, actually, with Union County SAR.
If you scroll down, a couple pages down, there's a picture of it, which is actually a pretty slick deal.
Yeah, that meets our needs.
Get a lot of meat out of that.
So that is the litter.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
And it is a titanium litter, very lightweight, the wheel comes off of it, it's backpackable into a remote area. The litter itself is two-piece, so it comes apart and can also be hiked in, flown in, whatever it takes. The interesting thing about this litter is you'll notice the fiberglass glass base, which is unlike the old Stokes', which allows that litter to be actually skidded, which works quite well in some of the open slopes that we have here in the Blue Mountain, and so, and in the wintertime on the snow. So that is what we are asking to purchase as a package from Cascade Litter.
How many are you looking at, boy? Just one?
Just one, yeah, for now. We have, currently, we have two other litters, both of them, I think the, one of them is about 10 years old, and the other one may be older than that. But we do have those two as our primaries right now, and then this would be our third one.
That ATP crash that you referenced from last month, that happened at the same time as kind of fair, didn't it? Is that the same one?
Yes, yeah, that, yeah, and that was, yeah, it was.
Yeah, I heard about that one. Yeah, that would have been nice to have for that.
It would have been, it would have been perfect to have for that one. Now, we currently do have one wheel for heavier litter, and, but it is a heavy steel balloon tire wheel. It's still usable, but very difficult to pack in, it's pretty heavy. This is very lightweight.
Does this have any relationship to that accident in the mountains?
Do we what?
Does this have any relationship to the accident in the mountains by the waterfall in West End?
Uh, it, well, not direct.
It could have been years there.
It could have, it would have been our backup. As, if the air extraction had not worked, we always want to have an alternative, and that would have been one of the alternatives, would have been the wheel litter down to, we would have had to cut a quarter in there, but that was in process, actually, planning for that. Unfortunately, yeah, we just had the big heavy wheel. Unfortunately, yeah, we just had the big heavy wheel, though. Union County is in the process of upgrading theirs as well. And we're trying to get our, our equipment kind of consistent, so we can work more seamlessly together.
I'd move for approval.
Thank you. Got a motion, second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bush.
All right, I'm gonna skip around a little bit more to Tom Fellows. I want to get you guys out of here, sorry. So number 13, vehicle purchase, I believe that's you.
Yep.
13 and 14 both.
Good morning, Commissioners, Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. So before you today, Public Works is requesting to purchase a 2022 Ford F-250 pickup from Kendall Ford on fleet sales. Last couple of years, we've actually held off on, on some of our fleet purchases, not knowing what was gonna happen, number one. And number two, anybody that deals with fleet can tell you that it's been getting more and more difficult. The manufacturers are not opening up the order boards for a very long period of time. When they do, the dealerships barely have time to even get quotes out to, to folks trying to purchase fleet stuff. And then the other problem with that, the manufacturers are, are not guaranteeing the price on delivery is going to be the same. So we've had a bit of a tough road, but we've came to a point where we need to continue to upgrade our pickup fleet a little bit. So we did find this pickup, it's actually on, on the lot down in Bend, and, and was available under the state contract. So we're requesting approval to purchase this pickup for $47,506.07.
Move for approval.
Motion, second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Don't go anywhere, you got another one.
Yeah, I know.
One year, right?
So, so this, this next purchase is for a service truck. A little over a month ago, one of our service trucks were, was involved in an accident out of Pilot Rock, where it totaled the pickup. And the insurance company paid $45,000 on, on that pickup. We found this pickup at Northside Ford on, on a fleet purchase, on the government, on the state contract, for $64,113.13. And so we're requesting approval to purchase this and as a replacement for the one that got lost in the accident.
Move for approval.
Motion, second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. I'm happy to see that you're all looking well rested for next week, so.
I think we're, we're lucky that our employee did not get hurt, too.
He, yeah, he was not seriously hurt. It was, it was an interesting situation. He was actually stopped at the stop sign, and the vehicle came across three lanes of traffic and nailed him. And he didn't even see it coming, so it was, it was, it was an odd situation. Nobody really got hurt, other than, than some vehicles got damaged. Interestingly enough, had his pickup not been there, the next thing that that vehicle would've hit would've been a, a house that, that had a lady and her children in it. So it was, it was, it was probably, it was, it was, yeah. It, it was an unfortunate thing, but, but under the circumstances, it was probably a, a good thing, so.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, back to number nine, election payable envelopes.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Since there doesn't appear to be anyone here for that, you might want to skip the next few for now, and I can cover them later.
Those three, maintenance.
Yeah, 10, 11, 12.
Mark's behind.
Oh, yes?
Yeah.
I didn't see them in the back there.
Okay, so these three.
Okay, maintenance pit.
Morning, Commissioners, Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Umatilla County. First is electric payable for the maintenance shop. This is the bulk of the last of the interior items for $10,435.12.
Any questions?
Are we, they're still lighting on the outside, the camera?
Yeah, the lighting finally came in for the outside. They have, one, two, three, four are installed.
And then the parking lot is on top of that, too, or is that including the parking lot?
That is not including the parking lot, yet.
So we still have time to come?
Yeah.
The three poles for that.
Yeah.
Say, was there a motion?
Move for approval.
Got a motion, a second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, next one is for the Community Corrections Project at the VFW Hall. This was for the, this was about three quarters of the door frames for $5,829.20.
And this is, we're getting reimbursed by.
Community Corrections, yeah. Yeah, finance is running it as a remodel, so it all goes through me.
Okay.
And then they'll, I'll bill them and they'll pay out.
They pay labor, too?
Yeah.
Move for approval.
Got a motion, second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mine is what he doesn't get out of community service workers.
Right, yeah, no, I get it.
Jail kitchen air handler contract.
Yeah, this is the, went out for bid. I want to move forward with this bid for $73,473 for the makeup air, air conditioning for the kitchen at the jail.
Did, did I read that right? You only got one bid on that?
Yeah, I had four people tell me they were too busy, not interested. And one other one said he was gonna bid, but never, never saw anything.
Move for approval.
Got a motion, a second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
I did see Joe Fiamara on, so 16, creation of position, public health.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this first one is a request for a new community systems developer. These, we're receiving funding from OHA originating from part of the ballot measure 108 that passed statewide for some of the tobacco tax. So this is work dedicated for tobacco area, specifically around equity-focused tobacco work. And this position would, in large part, be coordinating with a number of community organizations who are also receiving funding from OHA for this type of work, so that we can kind of work in alignment with folks in the area.
And again, funding is coming from OHA and not general fund dollars.
Correct, completely from OHA through our contracts with them.
I move for approval.
Thank you. Got a motion, second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You again, environmental health.
Yes, this one is, let me make sure I talk the right one here. So this is a request to create a new administrative aide for EH position that would be housed in the Hermiston office. The, with the move to the Hermiston, we are expanding our hours, and we want to be able to provide that level of support. This position would also support the position I'm gonna ask for after this, in addition to supporting some of the septic work and food work up in the Hermiston area and providing, you know, closer, closer access for folks in the Hermiston area. Funding for this position is coming from our modernization funds at this, at this point in time, and those funds are expected to continue beyond this current fiscal year.
Move for approval. Second.
Got a motion, second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Yeah, and so this position is to hire an environmental health specialist, three position, who would be housed at the Hermiston office. And this position would be the, kind of the forefront for some of the domestic well water issues that we've been working with right now, focused around the Lublama area. This would be an individual who could provide technical assistance to homeowners, kind of provide that one-on-one information, and also assist with some different testing information, be able to kind of see that whole, that whole system for them in its entirety, and provide that information, as well as having their, their kind of toes in the water, if you will, for the, the public water side. While we don't do the public water systems here, I do think coordination with that will be part of the solutions when we're talking about the nitrates in the, in the well water in that area. Funding for this, at this point in time, we're using some, some funds for modernization. There are multiple funding requests going to legislature that will, in theory, support this in the future. But just being, being upfront, that the funds I'm using right now are somewhat limited, and we're anticipating additional funds in the future. Or the decision would have to be made to support with general funds down the road. Just being very clear.
Move for approval. I second it, and the only comment I got is we can't fill these positions soon enough.
Got a motion, second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And last but not least for you, no, I don't need the last but not least.
Nope, sorry.
Yeah, as I said in the sun, no.
So this request is, is for payment up to $20,000 to Malheur County Health Department. Malheur's putting on a, an equity summit later this year. And they are also a participating partner of a regional collaborative that we, we have hosted, kind of created. And we are the fiscal agent for. We receive dedicated regional funds from OHA for this purpose. And a request came from Malheur County to use some excess funds that were generated when, when it took some time to get staffing on board to support this project and help other counties be able to attend. All, there were no objections from the other participating counties for the use of these funds in, in this manner. And I'm just here for the board to approve the expense because of the amount.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion, second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now last, but not least.
Now last. This is a quote we've received from Frazier's for furnishing the, the new Hermiston location that we are intending to move into end of this month. This is to get some new desks, new chairs, file cabinets, underdesk file cabinet drawers, and some bookcases for furnishing the new office in Hermiston, in line with expansion of our hours up there, which, which will be Tuesday, Tuesday through Friday, 8 to 5, starting the month of November, is the current plan, pending all construction getting completed on time. The funds for this would come, we have a cost allocation policy that where we, we expend funds of this type based on the FTE we have in those programs. And so all of our programs that work out of the Hermiston area would, would pay towards this cost that does include a couple of general fund budgets. But the largest program right now is the communal disease program, which would carry the largest load.
Move for approval. Second.
Got a motion, second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
521, personal property tax abatement. I see our assessors in the room.
Our much applauded assessor.
For sure.
Very honored.
My name is Rachel Reynolds, I'm the Director of Assessment and Taxation. And today we are asking to have a number of accounts have their taxes abated. We have determined that either these accounts, personal property businesses are no longer in business and have been in several years. The likeliness of us actually capturing any assets is 0%. And any manufactured home that's on this list is either no longer in the county or has been destroyed. So we're asking that these taxes can be abated to get them off from our rule and quit adding the $92 warrant fee each year, plus the cost of postage, regular mail, and certified mail on each year.
Sit and move. I want, I want her to say something after this, we don't want you to.
That's fine, you got a motion and a second?
Second, the, the only, the comment I have is that even though there are a lot of, and I had to ask this question in staff meeting, but although there are a lot of of names in here that are very familiar, most of them have sold the business and are not the original owners of the business. So we're looking at past owners or past operators of businesses, not the current.
Correct.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make that sure that was true.
Okay, got a motion, a second, I'll prepare the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And you're not allowed to leave yet, so.
Well, during, during our recognition, we didn't have anything at that point in time. But I would like for the record to be able to commend her to employees who created such a great accomplishment recently, and if you would elaborate on that, Rachel.
So yes, Maria Garcia and David Mitchell both went out. And Maria, Maria's former position, she was in, in collecting a debt and high-paid loans. And she would do what they called chasing, which was tracking down automobiles that people didn't no longer make their payments on. She wanted to do that towards manufactured homes and personal property. They said, why not? Go for it. And so they did. And as of last week, they had collected over 42% of the back taxes owed for manufactured homes. This is just personal property manufactured homes. They had collected 33% of the personal property, which is businesses. And they had collected 18% of real property, which keep in mind, a lot of those also are headed into foreclosure. But they stopped by and they knocked on our door. And by actually having our presence in the community knocking on doors, being there saying, you, you, these are due, you need to be paying these because we're, we have other options that we're gonna start working towards. That's the, that's where we are at right now. We started out with 212 warrants for personal property, personal property manufactured homes. We're down to, we've collected at 100 right now. So that's huge.
That's amazing.
Yeah, that's.
Please pass on, congratulations and thank you to them.
Will do.
Yeah, that's not fun work. But I'd like to know that we read that into the record, their accomplishment.
I will look at that.
We have to think outside the box and, and respond.
Absolutely.
That's fantastic.
Unfortunately, if you really look at a dollar amount, it's not huge dollar amounts. But it, we've collected some of these taxes back, started back in 2012. So it is a huge accomplishment.
Yes, it is.
And it keeps us from, it'll save the county money in the long run. It's taken a few days of them going out in the field and doing this. But it's a $92 warrant every year gets tacked onto these. But it's $7 every time we have to send it certified, plus the regular mail. And then staff's timed to do all this each and every year. So we will save money in the end.
Fantastic, now that kind of accomplishment should not go in the just.
Yeah, and we, both of them were, presented challenge coins two weeks ago for thinking outside the box and, and taking on their jobs as, as their own, so.
Excellent. Couldn't think of a better use for those coins.
Yeah, they did a fantastic job.
Thank you so much.
While we pass your stuff on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Number 22, trail grant application.
Good morning, Commissioners, Bob Walder, Planning Director. So my last item before you this morning is for approval for our department to submit an Oregon Community Pathways Grant Application. The Oregon Community Pathways Grant Application is a fairly new program through ODOT where federal funds and state funds are used to, for the, for the, for the development of trails. And so these are primarily off-system trails, meaning they're outside of public right-of-way. And so we are applying for this next round, or we would like to, for a portion of construction for Phase 1 of the Umatilla River Trail. Phase 1 would be the connection between Umatilla and Hermiston. And we've been working with Merchant McIntyre on this pre-application. Our hope is that we'll be invited to continue on with a full application, which would be the early part of 2023. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
None.
I, I would move for approval and then comment after that.
Second.
I, I, I want to thank Bob and Megan, and really how hard that they've I, I, I want to thank Bob and Megan and really how hard that they kind of pushed this project. They have a very strong and committed trail committee behind them that is willing to do almost anything. And I think that your ability to lead that kind of group and put that together is just kind of noteworthy, to say the least.
Yeah, I think if we're successful in this first grant, it'll be a real shot in the arm and we can build off that momentum for future projects to build the whole regional path, so we're pretty excited about it.
Does this include the money we allocated?
It, a portion of that may be able to go towards that. We were hoping to be able to use some of that for matching funds, but we have to use non-federally derived funds for the matching. But we may be able to use those funds for construction and design, which is a significant cost when you're looking at a regional trail of this magnitude.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
We have, we have a motion and a second, right? Uh, yes, we have a motion and a second. All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Don't worry, Bob, we're gonna pass it, I saw you stop and check. State agreement for VA support.
Uh, the board is requested to approve an agreement with the state of Oregon. This is for the transfer of the District Attorney Child Support Program to the state. Along with this transfer will include two county employees that will become state employees. And so, the agreement is before the board for approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Board payable, I have the twenty-four.
This is coming before the board because of the dollar amount. Approval is sought for a payable for the dues for the Eastern Oregon Counties Association in amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I have a twenty-five, livestock losses payables.
Uh, these are four payables coming before the board for approval. These are to compensate producers for losses for livestock for 2021. They're, were grant funded, and due to the amount that was received from the state, the missing livestock are only being paid fifty percent of what was originally approved and requested.
Do I have a problem?
Yes. Yes.
Are we just gonna do it all under one then?
Yes, there is, yeah, if you're requesting just to have all four payables approved.
Move for approval of all four payables.
I'll second. So, we got a motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? And one extension, motion carries. And twenty-six, physician reclassification. Could we add that one here? Okay. Uh, this is requesting permission to reclassify the Economic Development Coordinator position to a newly created Community and Business Development Coordinator position at range thirty-four. Our actual request is to approve reclassification of the Economic Development Coordinator position to that range thirty-four. And I would make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, twenty-seven, Department Ordinance Amendment, public hearing. So, we're gonna suspend our regular hearing, go into public hearing mode.
Okay, what's before the board is a second reading for the ordinance to update department, county department organization. Previously, the, these changes have been approved and now it's just being reflected in the ordinance and organizational chart.
Any questions? Comments? To the public? Okay, any comments from the public? And questions from the public? Hearing none, seen none? Okay, um, no comments and so, come back. Yeah, so we're gonna close the public hearing, go back to our regular meeting.
Move for approval of ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-ten.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. And, ooh.
This is coming for the board to authorization, authorize a request for proposal for a new cargo high roof van. This is part of the Community Development Block Grant that was, the county is the sponsor for, for the Agape House and its food bank. And so, what we are requesting is the issuance of an RFP for a new van for Agape House.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Uh, and twenty-nine, board meeting schedule.
The upcoming board schedule for the remainder of the year is before the board for review. There are two board meetings that are requested to be rescheduled. The November second board meeting to the November ninth, so a week later. And then, due to the AOC conference, there is no forum for November sixteen meeting. So, it's proposed that it is moved to November thirtieth, a week later.
Okay, any questions or discussion? I would entertain a motion.
So, move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
And thank you.
We have hit the end of our agenda, any Commissioner comments? Can you just go over?
And then counting, that's count number thirty-one, right? Item thirty-one.
And you had nothing to add to that?
Nothing.
Mr. Murdoch?
The only thing I have is, real quick, is regarding CCS. And the numbers were pretty, pretty big. And I wanted to kind of put this on the record, just because I'm so impressed by it. In the nine months between February two thousand twenty-one and through the end of November of two thousand twenty-one, Lifeways had a total number of mental health assessments totaling six hundred. In the eight, first eight months of CCS, mind you, six hundred in nine months. In the first eight months of CCS, we've seen one thousand and ninety-four. So, and they, that number is significant because one of the questions that's been coming up is delays in getting in for assessments. I think you're seeing why that is. That being said, I talked to Kimberly Lindsay, the Director of CCS, this morning. And they have been hiring staff left and right, and they are getting ready to start closing that gap between the current date and the subsequent date. So, we're gonna see that gap shortly significantly relative soon. So, that number was just here, six hundred to one thousand and ninety-four.
So, the record review specifically states they're hitting it out of the park.
Yeah. I would say so, so. Okay, with that, we are adjourned, thank you.
Make sure you share that with Kimberly.